Let me call the meeting to order. We thank you for joining us this evening. This is a regularly called and scheduled Greer City Council meeting, held June the 28th, 2022. Having called the meeting to order, I'd like to ask Councilman Riley Bettis, if he would, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by an invocation for council. If you would, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Heavenly Father, the city and this country are truly blessed by your divine grace. The power of your love has shown itself in so many ways recently. Thank you for putting courageous people of faith and intelligence in important places to uphold our freedom, our rights, and the sanctity of life. This council humbly and respectfully accepts the charge entrusted to it by the citizens of Greer to conduct the business of this city to uphold principled, virtuous, and transparent government, and to reject unethical and unwholesome activity. Help us to remember that you, not government, are our provider, and you have armed us with divine guidance, intelligent design, and absolute laws which serve as our guides. Father, please give this city, this state, and this country the courage and strength to prevail over all agents of arrogance, greed, immorality, and, yes, evil, that we would be worthy of your continued love and blessings. With glory to God, I pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Counsel, before we move to public forum this evening, I'd like to recognize Mr. Mike Barnes. Mr. Barnes is a council member with the Greenville County Council and joined us tonight. Thank you for being here, sir. With that, then, we will move to public forum. Public forum is set aside for those items on the council that people would like to address. We have one this evening. Mr. Ted Baldwin would like to address council in regards to the wrecker rotation. Mr. Baldwin, if you would, please come to the podium. If you will state your name and address as a matter of the record, I would appreciate it, and the floor would be yours, sir.
Thanks, sir. My name is Ted Baldwin. I am the owner of Alpha Towing. We currently have a Greer address at 205 Gary Armstrong Road in Greer. I am not currently on your wrecker rotation. I'm here to speak about the wrecker rotation and not speak against it, but to maybe get some clarification. I also have the current honor of being the vice president of South Carolina Towing Association. And I had some gentlemen and ladies in my office yesterday that do own wrecker businesses that are currently on the Greer rotation that voiced some concerns to me, and I just would like to clarify some things for them. If y'all do, y'all obviously have a copy of the rotation, how it's being presented. The first thing is on page four, I don't know if y'all have it broke down like that, subsection two, B. All wrecker service vehicles utilized while acting as a wrecker rotation service provider must be registered to the wrecker service's place of business. So the clarification we're looking for on that is just for tax purposes, because a lot of these wrecker services are not just operating in the city of Greer. They're operating in Spartanburg County, Greenville County. They're on not just one rotation list, but my company alone is on 11 rotation lists. So if we have to separate all these trucks to all these different places of business, which we do have places of business to make us eligible for each one of those rotations, it's going to be a paperwork nightmare for our offices. It's probably a little bit more easier for a guy that's just running one rotation or staying at one place of business. But for the purpose of the wrecker companies that have multiple locations, like myself personally, my LLC is one address. All my equipment is registered to that address. But on the DMV form, when we're registering our vehicles, it says that where is your vehicle housed? So if my vehicle is housed at 603 Spartanburg Highway South in Lyman, that's where I put it. If it's at 105 Belcher Road, and these are my different addresses throughout the county, then that's what I put where it's housed at. But if it's just basically for a purpose of taxes, I understand. I understand the cost of doing business in the city. So I was just looking for some clarification on that. Is this something we're just going to talk about later?
Yes, sir. Public forum, we allow a certain amount of time for a statement from an applicant. We don't generally answer any questions during this time. So if you want to give us what you've got, we'll try and make notes, and hopefully that'll come up during the discussion this evening.
Okay. The second thing would be what constitutes a place of business as far as the wrecker rotation is going to be defined. You have a lot of people that just have lots right now, that they do, that they perform their business on each rotation in those cities. Is a place of business going to be four walls, a roof, a desk, a chair? What is the place of business going to constitute? That'll be the second thing. Thirdly would be some clarification on page six. At the top of the page, I'm trying to give you, it's also in subsection two and the subheading of letter M. A wrecker service may secure the assistance from another wrecker service when absolutely necessary to do the job. This does not include asking another wrecker service to respond in their place. This could include the need for additional manpower or equipment. And that's what I want to touch on, the additional need for manpower and equipment. We rely on each one of our brother and sister companies in this business a lot to provide help when services are needed, when the job specifies we need bigger equipment, which I understand you're going through a heavy list, or we need multiple trucks, and some more manpower to get the roadways clear in a timely manner. The way this reads right now is kind of confusing. Are we not going to be able to charge? Are these gentlemen not going to be able to charge for this extra equipment coming in? It says one bill. We understand the one bill thing, because the Highway Patrol also has, we're only allowed to turn in one bill. But it also has every piece of equipment that you may bring into that accident scene to clean up that accident and get that roadway clear, defined and listed, how much we can charge. I can't ask Mr. Barnes to come out with another wrecker if he's not going to get paid, if it's going to take off of the whole bottom dollar of the bill. And I will promise you this, we're not in this business to lose money. It's a viable business. We're trying to make money. So that's something that probably needs to be more defined and addressed, is what they're actually going to be allowed to charge for when they bring other equipment in. So somebody's not holding the bill. All right. The next thing would be the next, the next subheading of N in that same subsection would be, can we get some clarifications on what are reasonable reasons for a wrecker service not being able to show up? Before they get suspended off the list, they'll don't know why. Can we get some reasons why they're allowed to have an excused absence off the list, or what constitutes unexcused absence? So, you know, if I just wanted to go out on a date with my girlfriend, and I decided not to show up for a call, we understand that's unexcused. But if I have a family emergency, that I, obviously, if I can notify dispatch, or I can notify the chief, that I'm not going to be able to show up, does that constitute as a justified reason for not being able to do the duties of a wrecker service? Then I'll skip over to page seven. And this is Z. Says, "Every firm providing wrecker services shall accept major credit cards in addition to cash for towing and storage services." And this is what I want to touch on. There shall be no additional fee charged for the use of credit cards. So once again, businesses are here to make money. So if they're not allowed to charge a fee to recuperate the losses of processing a credit card, I just kind of want some clarification on that. When I got my business license as a city Greer, I paid 2.89% processing fee. So I'm kind of wondering why, if we can be done at the city level to process credit cards, why can it not be done for the wrecker service as well? Or any other business that has a business license in the city of Greer charging a convenience fee or a processing fee at their business, whether it be the donut shop or a wrecker service? They should be able to charge that 2.89% and recuperate those losses. And that's all I got. Appreciate your time.
Yes, sir. I think we've got a list of that, and we'll see how much of that we can address during this conversation this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, then, counsel, let's move to the minutes of the meeting from the June 14th meeting. I'll entertain a motion, if they be received. Second, motion is second. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing them, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danham?
Yes.
Counsel, we are at a point in the meeting that we want to stop for just a second and give some special recognitions in terms of recognizing folks that have given exemplary service to our city in a couple of different regards. And so this evening, I want to make a presentation in regards to two different folks, and if you will allow me to do so this evening. I'm going to ask Mr. John Duggan, if he would, to join me up front here. We have a resolution to give to John tonight, and this only begins to scratch the surface of the relationship between the city and the Duggan &amp; Hughes Law Firm, and our personal relationship as well, too. I came to this position over 22 years ago and found myself during those early days, both as a friend and as a counselor. And we found ourselves in both positions from time to time. And he has offered both me and our former administrator much and well-respected advice through the years, and it has served us well. John serves as the city attorney for several cities here in the upstate, but he always tells us he likes Greer the best. So, or at least that's what I assume. So, John.
I swear I made my face.
So indeed, we would like to recognize, the Greer City Council would like to recognize the Duggan &amp; Hughes Law Firm this evening for their exceptional services, legal counsel to the city of Greer. This resolution reads, "Whereas the city of Greer senior management and elected officials are tasked with ensuring that the city's mission and core values are incorporated into operational activities and services. And whereas the role of the city attorney is to serve as chief legal advisor and to counsel the city of Greer leaders to carry out their responsibilities within the law. And whereas the city attorney provides insight on legal documents, litigation, risk management, media responses, and policy development, as well as acting as our city prosecutor. And whereas John Duggan and Daniel Hughes have served the city of Greer's legal counsel for 40 combined years, and for the past 10, 10 through Duggan &amp; Hughes LLC, adding Evan Brown Hall to their staff in 2015 to serve as city prosecutor. And whereas Duggan &amp; Hughes not only provides outstanding professional service to the city of Greer, but actively supports Greer community ministries, Greer relief, and resources. The Greater Greer Community Chamber of Commerce and the City of Greer Police Department COPS for TOTS program. Now therefore, City Council of Greer and the City of Greer wishes to congratulate and thank Duggan &amp; Hughes LLC on the occasion of their 10th anniversary as city attorney for dedicated service to the city of Greer and to its citizens. I want to present you with this resolution, and thank you for your service, and to acknowledge that service, we want to present you with a key to the city as well, too. And this key to the city says that this serves as a token of our sincere appreciation from my staff, from myself, and from the Greer City Council, given to John Duggan for his 50 years of practicing law and his 23 years of dedicated continuous service as the city attorney, advising and supporting the city of Greer to provide good governance, transparency, and accountability as it fulfills its mission. John, on behalf of the city of Greer, we thank you for all that you do for the city of Greer. Thank you, sir. You will indeed get a moment to say something, and I'll hold that for you.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of council, and Andy, our city administrator, and Tammy, we've been working together a long time. But I want to tell you all here, it has been a privilege. And Daniel, stand up, because he is a vital part of the representation we provide to the city. And I'm very privileged to work with Daniel. But I want to tell you all a story that almost none of you here knew. And that is, I began practicing here almost 50 years ago, and this community has been wonderful to me and to our firm. And we're here not just to make a living, but to care for people. Because a lot of times, people just need guidance and advice, and we try to help and not use that as a way to just make more money, but to care for people. And I like to think that marks us that it's not always about money, and it has not always been about money in serving Greer. But I want to tell you something that'll shock you. Because in the early 1980s, Don Smith was elected mayor, and Ken Smith, his brother, was running the commission for public works. So they came to me and asked me to represent both. So I came down and started looking at income, expenses, and Greer, at that point, Victor Mill and Greer Mill closed. We lost the tax base. And Greer was headed bankruptcy. And the amazing thing is, this is the mid-1980s. So I sat down with Mayor Smith, and I said, "Don, we're headed bankruptcy. The city can't make it unless we do something different. We need to annex and expand the tax base of Greer, or we don't have a chance to make it, and the state is going to take over." And so we began an aggressive annexation. It may surprise you to know that Greer is now the largest city geographically in the upstate. And to my amazement, we have over-doubled the population, and it's growing faster and faster. And the latest census report said that in the next five years from 2020, that census, Greer will grow by 34%, approximately, and will be almost 45,000 people in the city limits. And I will tell you that in the next 25 years, Greer will be larger in population than the city of Greenville. Because we have more room to grow, and we're already large geographically, and we're in perfect location halfway between Spartanburg and Greenville, and right at the airport and the runway. And I will tell you, the reason Greer has gotten here is because this community has been blessed to have exceptional leadership, both the administrative staff, people like Andy and Tammy, who do the everyday work, but the policy setters and the mayor and council. And I have worked with Rick, because when he came in, I was re-elected city attorney, because I went a period of time where I quietly resigned because of disagreement with the former administration, and then came back to serve the city. But this is a wonderful community now. It is so vital, and it is getting better and better, and the momentum is here. And I've had a lot of fun working with Mr. Mike Barnes, who's now serving us on county council. And so I just wanted to tell this story for those of you who have no idea that less than 40 years ago, we were that close to bankruptcy with the city. And it sure is different now, and it's getting better. So, Mr. Mayor, thank you. And thank you, counsel, for the privilege of working with you and serving this community. It's been wonderful. I've really enjoyed it.
Just join me around. I'm going to ask Mr. Merriman to join me. I'm not strong enough to lift this bag of cash that we're getting ready to, getting ready to give to John Holland. John, you want to come up here, please, sir? I understand our division, but we're going to give you a certificate of appreciation and then a small token of our appreciation as well, too. We are recognizing John Holland and I for his years of service with our fire department. John wears a lot of other hats for the city, other than just with the fire department. And when Tammy told me he was retiring, I went, "Oh, my gosh, I didn't know he was leaving the planning commission." And she said, "No," said he hadn't given that up yet. So we're going to, we're going to make sure he's still around for a while. But his time to the city of Greer is drawing nigh. So this appreciation, this certificate of appreciation says, "Congratulations upon your retirement from the city of Greer, presented in appreciation of 25 years of dedicated service with the city of Greer from January 2nd, 1997, to May 9th, 2022. John Holland, we want to give you this certificate of appreciation." And I believe we've got a small gift that the administrator would like to give you as well, too.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Very nice. And you'd like to add?
Sure.
Do your stories go back 40 years?
Well, not, not quite. You know, it's really funny. I told my wife, we were sitting out here, I said, "You know, when I started, no one actually that's on council now was on council." And Ed was not here yet when I started. But it is amazing, as Mr. Duncan said, how well the city has prospered, how it's grown, and that's to the leadership of this group right here. You folks out here may or may not know, we've got the best fire department in the state. It's always been that way, and it's just better and better. And this council has allowed us to purchase equipment and manpower, and we're still growing. And it's been my honor to serve. My father was a volunteer fireman here in Greer in the late 60s, and my mother made him quit, and he regretted it, I think, until the day he died. And, you know, it's been a blessing. I hope I've got to help a few people along the way. And it truly has been my honor to serve on this fire department. So thank you so much for this, and it was very intimate. We appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Mayor, let me have a, let me have a word. Should I give you equal time? Yeah, I have to have, yeah, yeah. And I know you're always supposed to say something nice, but in I am. Now, John and I served on the department. I started a little bit earlier than he did. And as he talked about, things change and how we've grown. It used to be that as our call volume went up, they would call volunteers in to stand by, and lo and behold, we'd catch a call, and it's time to go. And several times, John was my chauffeur or engineer. And I will tell you that I am a very nervous passenger. But John don't make me nervous. Not in a fire truck now, other places in his van or his car, that's different. But, but he didn't make me nervous. I always ask him the last question before, when I was closing my door, "Do you know where you're going?" And the only time he came up with a response that didn't, he says, "Well, I think so." I said, "Get, get, get the mapbook out and make sure."
We had ice and snow around that night.
But, but anyway, John is a great servant for the city and the community. He, as the mayor mentioned, he serves on our planning commission, does a great job leading that group. He is also involved in the Lions Club. He's also a faithful servant at the church he attends and does well. So, thank you, John.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jay. Counsel, let's move to departmental reports. They're contained in your packet. If you've got any questions, please see the administrator in regards to updates. We've got Ms. Howell to join us for our financial report.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Give you a brief summary for our financials as of May 31st, 2022. Starting out with the general fund, we have year-to-date revenue of $31,876,000. We have year-to-date total expenditures of $31,800,000, which is 6% over budget. But if you look at our dashboards where we compare actual to benchmarks, we have a positive overall variance of $854,000. The cash balance in the general fund is $16,428,000. Moving on to the hospitality fund, the year-to-date revenue is $2,873,000. The year-to-date expenditures are $2,568,000, and the cash balance as of May 31st is $1,923,000. Finally, the stormwater fund, the year-to-date revenue is $1,151,000. The year-to-date expenditures are $727,000, and the cash balance in the stormwater fund is $2.2 million. I'll be happy to answer any questions that I can.
Counsel, the floor is open for questions. Thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Counsel, we held this matter over, both these matters, over at our last meeting. I'd like to bring them forward for your consideration this evening under appointments to boards and commissions. The first before you.
Give it to me.
Oh. You got anything important to say? Not near as important as what y'all got to say. Let's back up, then, and do the administrator's report. Mr. Merriman?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll make it quick. We had a fantastic Freedom Blast this weekend. We've estimated somewhere in the neighborhood of 15,000 people, but I think Steve Owens may only have been counting with one shoe on, because I swear there had to have been 20 or 25 in the park. But 15,000 in fireworks were fantastic. You can find some more information about that, just in the event, if you didn't make it on social media, we're kind of all over the place on that. But more to the point, I'd like to thank our staff and the volunteers that really pulled this thing off. You know, we have a fantastic park and recreation staff, but I think what makes them so good is the core volunteers that support the work that they do. And when you've got 15,000 to 20,000 people in city park for fireworks and vendors and everything else, it doesn't just happen. So from me to staff, thank you so much for the work you've done. And from me to the volunteers that assist the staff in pulling such off such a great event, thank you so much. The second thing is, just be aware there's traffic calming measures are being completed on the south end of Mount Vernon Road to reduce the cut-through traffic on Chestnut and Hillside Drive. There will be a new stop sign and a stop bar on Chestnut Ave and Mount Vernon, a stop-ahead sign on Chestnut before the stop sign. All four stop bars at Chestnut and Hillside are going to be repainted. And this week, there will be the installation of two speed humps on Chestnut and one on Hillside. I know I just gave you a lot of information, certainly a lot for the public, but that information will be available through our normal social media outlets. So residents in that area or residents that drive through that area can know more. By way of reminder, just two quick calendar items. Moonlight movies, Week Three will be Monsters Inc. on the Thursday, the 30th. And do mark, mark calendars for March, for July 21st, the Greer Chamber of Commerce will host its 11th Annual Public Safety Appreciation Luncheon from noon till 1:00 at the Cannon Center. The event's sponsored by the Greenville Federal Credit Union, but it's a great opportunity for the chamber, and they do for the chamber and they do a good job recognizing our public safety folks. So, that's again, July 21st at the Cannon Center at noon. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. And I want to echo your comments. This may have been the biggest and in my opinion, most successful festival that we've had. Largest crowd without a doubt. And everything from the vendors and displays to the music and the crowd, absolutely phenomenal. I ran into one of the vendors in town today who told me that he does these types of events all over the state as a, as a vendor. He said, without a doubt, this one was the most organized and one of the best that he had ever attended. He made a comment that he had never seen an event be over and the cleanup crew come through so close behind the crowd. He said he felt like he was at Disney World. So, I thought that was quite the comment from him. So, hats off to those folks on our team that were involved in that event from planning all the way through to cleaning up after that event. With that then, we will now move to appointments and boards and commissions. I asked that we hold these over to this meeting. I am prepared to bring a nomination to the board for architectural review. David Langley's term expired 6/30/2022 or will expire. I bring that for you, for you for consideration and will entertain a motion to receive. Submove. And a second. Floor is open for any discussion. Comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, the other appointment we had this evening is the Greenville Spartanburg International Airport Environments Planning Commission. Mr. Miles Nason term expires 6/30/2022. I am here to bring his name before you for consideration. I'll entertain a motion to receive. Motion, second. Motion, second. Floor is open for any discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, without, let's move to items of old business, the first of which is the second and final reading of ordinance number 7-2022. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of a portion of property owned by Kurton Investments LLC located at 191 Freeman Farm Road by 100% petition and to establish a zoning classification of I-1 for said property. Mr. McMahon joins us this evening for that conversation. Any new or additional information in regards to ordinance number 7-2022?
Yes, sir. Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on February 21st and they did make a recommendation to approve the I-1 zoning request.
Comes as a recommendation for planning commission staff to, I hear, a motion to receive. Submove. And a second.
Second.
Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Second item before us this evening is the second and final reading of ordinance number 24-2022. This is an ordinance to provide for the annexation of property owned by CMC Group LLC located at 1103 Highway 14 by 100% petition and to establish a zoning classification of C-2 for said property. Mr. McMahon joins us for this conversation as well. Any newer additional information that might be pertinent to this issue?
Yes, sir. Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on June 20th and did make a recommendation of approval for C-2 zoning.
Comes with a recommendation for approval and I entertain a motion to receive ordinance number 24-2022. Submove.
Second.
And a second. Floor is open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, let's move to new business. The first item before us this evening is the first reading of ordinance number 30-2022. This is an ordinance to amend Article 3 wreckers of Chapter 94 vehicles for hire of the city of Greer. Code of ordinances, the purpose of the amendment to the city's wrecker ordinance is to improve the efficiency for the police department administration of the wrecker rotation list and to improve the regulations governing wrecker services and to improve fairness among competing wrecker services as well. We're joined by staff and Mr. Hughes is available as our city attorney as well, too. Chief Hamby, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, counsel. Appreciate the opportunity to be before you this evening. We have before you a set of recommended amendments to our current wrecker ordinance that we would like for you to consider. I want to, before I get into the, any of the weeds or discussion about the amendments that we're proposing, I want to go ahead and, before I forget, just acknowledge, I want to acknowledge the wrecker services who have honorably served on our wrecker rotation, many for a long time. And so, we, we don't want to discount the, the work that they've invested in, in this process because they are definitely a stakeholder in what we're addressing tonight. So, thank you to all of them and thank you to those who are not here as well. I want to just kind of provide a baseline for this, what we're presenting to you. Why does this wrecker ordinance even exist? And so, I present to you that this wrecker ordinance exists so that we, as a police department, have, have a means to effectively, efficiently and safely remove vehicles from the roadway when they need to be removed. And we frequently come across these occasions such as circumstances, such as collisions, where there's automobile collision, cars not able to be driven for, for many different reasons. Those cars sometimes are blocking part of the roadway, sometimes the entire roadway. So, we have to have those cars removed from the roadway so that we can open traffic flow back up so our motoring public can have a safe passage and get, go about their day. Additionally, we, on occasion, arrest people from vehicles and therefore, we end up in possession of their vehicle at that point in time. So, during those occasions, we will have typically someone in our custody who's sitting in the back of a patrol car. We need to get that car removed from the roadway immediately so that we can keep track of the vehicle and turn it over safely, secure the property that's in, in the car and, and also get that person in custody moved on to a safe place. So, there are, this, this wrecker ordinance allows us a, a system to accomplish that. Another purpose of the wrecker ordinance is to regulate pricing under these circumstances. This wrecker ordinance allows us to prepare and regulate a list of eligible services who will respond within a certain amount of time, follow a pricing guideline set by the city in our fee schedule. And the reason for this, the pricing regulations are that, if you can imagine if someone involuntarily had their vehicle towed, it wasn't a decision that they were able to plan to, to have to do. And then their vehicle's now in possession of another business, they're pretty much not in a really good negotiating point for price. So, under those conditions, we, we do recognize that the, the, this ordinance, if they, if the vehicle is towed under the reasons I just mentioned, that there is a control point for pricing. Additionally, that, for vehicles that are towed under these circumstances, that they're going to a facility that is safe and secure. So, we have guidelines that, that regulate the facility and the safety of the, the size and the, the safety measures at the facility. And then additionally with that, we want to ensure that we have people in, on the staff who are in our wrecker businesses that we deal with are, are people that can be trusted to do that. So, we have had this current version of our ordinance in place for at least 20 years. I do not know exactly when it was enacted, but my memory goes back at least 20 years. During this time, we have repeatedly and almost daily found challenges that we are dealing with, with this ordinance. Approximately 10 years ago, when I was in a different role in our police department, the same role that Lieutenant Blackwell has now, I did present a few recommendations to the, the council at that time in a planning retreat. And in the guidance that I kind of received from council at that time, that there was not a whole lot of interest in making any amendments at that time. So, it's been 10 years. We're still working with those guidelines, still continually facing the same challenges and troubles. So, we've been trying for a long time. But, so, we're presenting these amendments and I'm going to just highlight a couple of the challenges and Lieutenant Blackwell, I'm going to have her speak. So, she may be able to elaborate a little bit more, but some of the challenges, we do not have enough resources to invest, to dedicate to managing the tow list. We have currently 18 services that, that we have on our rotation list. We've had as many as 19 in the past. There are unclear boundaries of when, under the current ordinance, that one service can spawn into a second or a third business. Our ordinance, basically, I, I will just present it as it has, has loopholes in it. So, we would like to address those loopholes and clarify those issues. Another issue is we've had trouble with tow services towing on behalf of each other. Not that they're trying to do anything, you know, sideways or skirt the rules or regulations. It's just that it causes trouble for our customers to try to track their vehicles down. All right? Another issue that we've had with tow services taking vehicles to other areas or other lots that they have in other areas that are outside the city, some of them could be in a, in a municipality such as Lyman or Malden or other areas. So, our customers, again, are having to track their vehicles down and that causes a lot of trouble for the customer, but it also, or the owner of the vehicle, but also causes additional work on our staff to have to track down where the car actually went to. So, after identifying these issues and maybe others that Lieutenant Blackwell will share, and we also coordinated with our city attorney, Daniel Hughes, but we've developed a, a list of proposed amendments for, for you to consider tonight. But we, we took the mindset of creating a balance between what's fair to the customers or the owners of the vehicles, what's fair to our police department staff, just not only our police officers, but our tow service administrator, Lieutenant Blackwell, and our dispatchers. Because they have to answer a lot of these calls and sort through a lot of the complaints after hours and on weekends and holidays. But also an ordinance that we believe is fair to our wrecker services who've been serving. We did consult with several of our wrecker service owners and operators and we took their advice and applied a few of those things to this proposed ordinance, amended ordinance that we're, we have here tonight. But most of all, we think we've provided a, an ordinance that has sufficient amendments to, to ensure that we have the most efficient and fair ordinance for, for all the above. So, I would, at this point, request that Lieutenant Blackwell maybe provide a few more of the details on the changes and kind of go through them. Counsel was also provided a cover memo provided by city attorney, Daniel Hughes, and will of course be available to answer any questions.
Mayor and counsel, thank you for having me again. Some of the, the major changes, I think, that would have the most impact on our current list. The first one is the geographical location requirements that we're proposing for our businesses. Currently, we allow a business to have a lot, storage lot location within the city limits of Greer, but their place of business can be anywhere. And that causes issues. It's fairly well-known, I think, among the wrecker community and to us as well, that more often than not, those lot locations within the city are only to satisfy the requirements of the current ordinance and aren't used appropriately. More often than not, the cars are taken to the primary place of business where their storage lot location is and sometimes that's not in the city or convenient whatsoever. And that's relatively common practice and we've had complaints over many years. So, our initial proposal was to require both the business and the lot location to be located within the city limits of Greer. That's easier for us to manage. I don't have to follow wreckers to wherever they take cars in order to ensure compliance. I don't have time to do that. This eliminates that altogether and it also provides a better service for those who have had their cars towed. They don't have to go anywhere, they're, they're local. I have had some conversations recently with some of our businesses who are very, very close to the city. Some of them even touch the city limits at their location. And so, if counsel sees fit, we are not opposed to considering possibly a .5 mile radius, .5 radius mile distance from the city. I think that still satisfies our customer service aspect. It satisfies my ability to, to ensure that these cars are going where they need to go because I don't have to drive 10, 15-plus miles and find cars, which I haven't been doing because I don't have time to do it. So, we feel like if counsel sees fit, that is an appropriate consideration to possibly extend outside the city, but only .5 miles. There also is, within our proposed changes, the lot location can be within one driving mile of the primary place of business. That's, but also within the city limits of Greer. That was what was proposed. Because we understand zoning can sometimes be difficult and, but we, we had it all within the city limits of Greer. If counsel were to consider that .5 mile exception or modification to our proposal, we would also then request that, that one mile driving distance lot location exception doesn't apply to that. I would suggest then that if they're going to be outside of the city limits within that .5 miles at their lot and their business needs to be in the same location. Because then we're looking at one and a half miles and like was told earlier, our city is geographically the biggest city in the upstate and so, we're talking out past Reedville, another mile and a half. And I think that that, again, sort of defeats the purpose of staying close to Greer, to, to help us and our customers. Are there any, I don't know, is there any questions or clarification about that right now?
Is that already in the amended ordinance?
So, the .5 mile is not. I, our initial recommendation to counsel was everything be located within the city limits of Greer. I've had multiple conversations with some of our current wrecker companies who provide good service and, and are very close to the city and, and suggested maybe a consideration of extending it .5 miles. And that actually affects four of those companies. And so, we are not opposed to you considering that. We just, we don't want to go much further or further at all, really. Because I think that defeats the purpose of these changes that we're, we're suggesting. Currently, as proposed, everything's in the city limits.
So, so it would possibly add as many as four more to the list. How many are, how many are qualified by their residence in the city right now?
Okay. Good question. So, if the current rotation list, as we have it, there are, one, two, three, four, five, six that would qualify by location if it were within the city.
How many are qualified by their residence in the city right now?
Okay, good question. So if the current rotation list, as we have it, there are, one, two, three, four, five, six that would qualify by location if it were within the city. However, a couple of those six would have to change the way they do business, like get a truck and things like that. There's some of these businesses that take advantage of the loopholes in the current ordinance that would not qualify for other reasons. Geographically, they would qualify, but they would have to make serious modifications to the way they run their business to qualify in other ways for the wrecker ordinance. So I would have some concerns at that point, after looking at it, that we might not be able to serve, four to six companies may struggle to serve the quantity of work that we provide. And so that's another reason that the .5 miles could work, if you see fit, to add a couple other wreckers the opportunity to be on the list.
So to propose a more ordinance suggests that the police chief can cap it at 10?
Yes, sir.
I'm going to assume that that's a workable number, that 10 is?
Yes, sir. Much, much more workable than 19.
And more workable than four or five as well?
I'm not sure that four or five would be able to handle the workload. I'm not sure. I have a report, our computer system with our wreckers sometimes struggles. I have where, in the month of May, we did 115 next-on-rotation requests. I think that number is somewhat lower, but looking, most of our wreckers do approximately six, they did approximately six toes each, next-on-rotation in the month of May. And that's 16 different wreckers. So I don't know if we reduce it to four, that significantly increases their workload and they tow, most of them do tow, and that is correct for multiple different municipalities and tow wrecker rotation lists, and that would be a struggle.
Is that 115, is that fairly typical? Is that the trend we're seeing numbers-wise?
I think that we're trending up. Pulling this report, and it may be my fault for, I struggled to get this particular report. I could pull more numbers for more months for you. I feel like maybe I can call someone who knows IT better than I do to get a better report or more easily pull that report. I would say that that's probably average. We are trending upward with collisions and...
You're saying that that is consistent?
I think that that's, yes. When you break it down and look at the number per wrecker company, I think six is a very probably accurate number. It has dates and times for each wrecker company. If they didn't miss any, they got probably six in May, around six each.
While we discuss, no, you have questions?
Okay.
Yeah, we'll load the floor and discuss, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I'm sorry.
Okay. So that's one obvious significant change that we made. Another change that we made that affects some of the folks on our list is one business per address, one business per place of business. And so that would mean that your business license at your address, you can have one business, not multiple, for the purposes of the wrecker rotation. That's a significant change. And that's pretty cut and dry. Any questions there?
So if whoever was the owner of that particular towing company has a site, and let's just say it's three acres, and it's got office space for whoever, with the office space more than likely being, or even the grounds being owned by technically something that's different than the wrecker business. Follow me so far?
I think so.
Okay, you have a person who owns the facility?
Okay.
Who also is the owner of the tow company?
Okay.
But the tow company pays rent to the owner. Follow me? And so he has a place of business?
Okay.
So could that owner of the facility lease out space to different wrecker companies? Although he's the owner.
Let me see exactly how it's worded. The intent there would be for one address to serve one place of business for the purposes of the wrecker rotation.
I know what the intent is, but if I'm, you know, if I'm somebody and I've got five trucks...
We'll subdivide.
Yeah. I mean, that just makes business sense.
So one thing that does address that is the amendments propose that one location equals one business where that is the business address. So I would assume their business license would have to indicate that address, but also the vehicles would have to be registered at that address as well. So that kind of irons out a lot of those issues. Now, if you had a wrecker business who leases from, you know, the footprint from someone else's property, I don't think that would eliminate them, as long as those other conditions are in place.
Yeah, and you still could have one owner doing the whole thing like that. It's kind of like companies who manufacture stuff and then they also ship stuff and they own the trucks that ship it, but they have a separate shipping company.
Well, I think, if I may jump in, the difference here is, though, under that scenario, they're not competing interests. So if Jay Arrowood owned a piece of property and you had a business off of that property and then you had a separate wrecker service that you owned, that paid the parent company back, that would be eligible under the ordinance as is written. Where you would run into a problem is if you opened a second wrecker under your name but called it something different and still paid rent back to the parent company, that's where your conflict arises. You could have a fleet of 10 wreckers, that's not, as long as they're all registered and licensed to the business. It's when you've got that second business license pulled for a separate and distinct entity is where you run into the issue.
Right. Again, go ahead. I think that Mr. Booker's point, and if we can kind of wrap this one up, there's going to be some discussion about this potential amendment about being outside the city. It may be time to discuss that in that. So let's move on with this, if you don't mind. So we can make two or four other discussions.
Okay.
Thank you.
A third change that we made that creates significant confusion for everyone involved on our end and then our customers' end is if we call a wrecker company to respond to a next-on list, they're physically unavailable for whatever reason. They accept that next-on-list request, call a friend who takes their own truck and goes and picks up this wrecker. So now we have a customer who's getting a picture of the tow truck, or they think that company B is the person who towed their car. When they call dispatch to find their car, they're going to tell them company A, when in fact, company B picked up their car. And sometimes company B takes it to A's lot and sometimes they don't. And so that creates a lot of confusion for us. And so another significant change we made was if you cannot respond to a call for service, you are not allowed to request another wrecker respond in your place. I'll address the question about assistance momentarily. That's entirely separate, but this is you. If we call wrecker company A, wrecker company A's truck needs to come to the scene. If you cannot, you need to, you will be skipped and we will move on to the next-on list. And then a couple other things that we think are very positive would be we increased the response time from 20 minutes to 30 minutes, understanding that, again, Greer has grown significantly, there's a whole lot of traffic. Most of the time, you can get there in 30 minutes. We are not, you know, stuck, stuck on that, but 30 minutes is pretty reasonable in most circumstances. So we increased that response time. We also increased the number of no responses before removal consideration from the list. It used to be three in six months, it's now five, or three no answers. And by no answer, that means you just didn't pick up the phone when you were called. And it happens surprisingly often. So refusal to answer the question about what is considered an appropriate non-response reason, I would argue sickness, illness, things unexpected, family emergencies are appropriate if dispatch were to call you and you said, you know, I'm on the way to the hospital, I can't come tonight, something like that. You have five of those in six months. And so if you have more than five family emergencies or something like that within six months, then I think that we need to have a conversation because you're not satisfying and responding the way that you need to. We're not trying to kick everyone off the list for no reason, but we need wreckers to respond when we call them. It's hard to believe that when we tell some folks it's a moped, they would rather not tow it, and so they say they're unavailable. Those are the things we're looking to avoid in these situations. Or if it's an old car and it's a violation and that car's not worth anything, and they know that, they sometimes would choose not to respond because that could cause a loss for them in the future. And so those are the types of things that we're trying to limit by that. We're not trying to kick people off because they have family emergencies or there is an occasion where all of their trucks are busy because it's been a busy night and everybody crashed their cars. That's not what we're trying to do. I think five excuses and three no answers is a sufficient amount of non-responses in six months to allow for those types of things to come up. So I hope that answers that question. I don't think there's any, there's some changes to the insurance, that Daniel looked at the insurance numbers for us and increased that some, and he thinks that that's, you know, current best practice and would satisfy. So there are some changes to that as well, outside of my brain power that he suggested. I think that's all the major changes for now that I'd like to address. Daniel?
Right. Mr. Hughes, we have your cover letter. Anything you want to add to the discussion at this point, sir?
Just briefly to address Mr. Arrowood's point regarding place of business, the intent is one address for one particular business. Now, under your hypothetical of someone owned a large lot, designated each individual lot as a separate business location, under a separate business name, not owned by the same person, then that would be okay in terms of recognizing them, that wrecker service, as a separate company for purposes of the rotation list.
How do you, you keep saying "person," but if, you know, if they're not, if they don't set the business up as being a sole proprietorship, or it's a, it's a, something out different than, you know, corporation, is a corporation, so, I mean, that...
So if you had Arrowood Wrecker Service and then you opened up Arrowood Wrecker Service Number One, and then you said Arrowood Wrecker Service Number Two?
Yeah.
It's still your business to that. We're declaring that to be against the ordinance. That's what's been happening, when an entity under the same common control is being divided into separate businesses at one location and getting on the rotation list more than once. That's what we're trying to avoid with defining place of business in the ordinance.
Okay, I understand what you're saying. I just, I'm not sure that I agree with that just because it's same name. I mean, it's very simple to take an individual, separate them from a business, and the business still operate.
The problems we're running into is taking advantage of getting on your name, making it, we're trying to make it fair to all businesses. So if you've got, I mean, you could open up as many wrecker service businesses if you wanted to under one location and get on the wrecker service more than once, more than another company can, we're trying to even the playing field.
Yeah, I understand that, but you're not going to even the playing field under a regulated business. I mean, so we shouldn't, I mean, this is a regulated business and, you know, we're not, the fairest thing is that everybody plays nice and everybody competes, but that didn't happen years ago, so we have a regulated business. I must wait till we get a motion.
Okay. All right. With that then, council, this is the first reading of ordinance number 30-20... This is the first reading of ordinance number 30-2022. This is an ordinance to amend Article 3, Records of Chapter 94, Vehicles for Hire of the City of Greer Codes of Ordinance. I'll entertain a motion to receive for the purpose of discussion.
So moved.
And a second.
Say.
Floor's open for discussion.
The thing that I think we would make this whole, we probably should consider, because the issues, when you look, if you go back through the years and the issues that we have, is because the city has continued to grow. So you grow, you have more crashes, you need more wrecker service, and there's a finite representation, or there's a finite number of companies that can meet what we're asking them to do, because, basically, of land and the location of business and the unaffordability of opening up a new location. We are going to continue to grow and, because by our figures, in less than five years, what, 6,000, is that not what we're, so our crashes are going to continue to go up. So our list probably is not going, in five years, is going to be insufficient to handle it. Is it, what I would suggest, what just hits me right off the bat, is you have regulations as to how a business has to operate, but you put it out to bid, and then that way, companies can say, yep, we meet A, B, C, D, E, and this is our price for each tow. And then we're dealing with smaller number of businesses and then every, however many years, you have a contract that's up for renewal. So I don't know if that has been thought about, but, you know, and I applaud you for going through, doing all this, but we'll be back here in just another year or two, just because of nothing but growth. So have you thought about that?
So this offers the ability for the police department to limit it to 10? And I do think that it just so happens to be that if we did expand the half-mile, which is not really what we presented to you, we said in the city, but if we did extend it to one half of a mile, I think we would reach 10 naturally anyway. But so, as the city would grow, we would be able to increase that. It just offers the police chief the ability to limit it if the discretion is necessary to 10. And so I believe that we could easily increase that number if the market requested that or showed that need. If that demand for more service is there, I'm sure the companies will come, and then we would be able to flex that number as the city grows.
And I understand your explanation, but we don't stand, our city doesn't stand alone. You know, as we grow, the entire upstate grows, so the demand for towing services grows. I don't know, to me, it seems that, a different way to think of it is to put it out for bid, but that's my opinion. I don't...
I don't disagree, because while it seems counterintuitive to some degree, I know in many larger cities, you know, they have single source. And, you know, you'll see a very limited number of wreckers on a rotation list, maybe even a single list.
So that does occur in some cities, absolutely. There's one pretty close by here that uses, I believe, two or three wreckers, and then they alternate weeks. However, to be equipped to handle that, you must be ready to respond to multiple car act, multi-car collisions, sometimes three-car collisions. We've had as many as six-car... sometimes three-car collisions. We've had as many as six-car collisions. That's extremely rare, but there are times where you may have to pick up a car or two at the same time. So that, the amount of equipment required and personnel to handle all that within that 30-minute response time, it would be very substantial, I think. And I don't know that having that much equipment, because it would require a lot of investment from the company to be able to reach that point. However, I don't think we can continually, on an average day, make it justifiable for them to invest all that capital so that they meet these standards to possibly respond to a multiple car collision. For example, there's other things. It might be just back-to-back toes. You might have a tow down near Franklin Point, and then another tow request 30 minutes later near Lake Robinson. It would be absolutely impossible to, for one or even two companies to probably be able to handle all that stuff.
And I understand that logic. However, part of, or the big chunk of this ordinance is telling a business, well, we're going to call you one time, and then on the 11th call, we're going to call you back. Because we've gone to great effort to tell people, you've got to do this, this, and this, and then we're going to give you one shot in ten to call you. So, you know, the people who, maybe they've got a location here in Greer, then they've got a location throughout the upstate, as long as they can hit that mark, fine. It's just, it's just a matter of, to me, it's a thing that just continues to go on and on and on because of growth, and it will continue to grow. And as we try to continually monkey with the ordinance, I think it's just going to make it even worse, but...
So the, I appreciate that, Mr. Airwood. The, I will, I'm just going to throw this out there, and you're the policy deciders on this, so I just want to throw a thought out to you. So it is easy to get caught up in the, how can we make it work for these businesses? And I do respect that, and we've actually accounted for some of that in this, all these ordinance amendments that we brought forth. But we're trying to make a balance between what works for the police department, because that's where we're really struggling. We're really struggling managing this because we don't have time, resources. We have competing priorities that we have to always deal with each day, but also for the customers so that they can track their car down. So we're trying to find like a balance here. I don't think any, any version that we've tried to come up with really handles all of them perfectly. There is some compromise out there.
Yeah. And let me throw another customer in there, and that's our citizens. We're opening up the roadways, and then more than likely, we're towing their automobiles. And one of the things you do accomplish by bidding is prices come down.
I'd just like to make one comment in response to Mr. Airwood's comment. One change we did make here, which was more business friendly, you mentioned if they don't respond, if they don't pick up, unless they're busy on another call, previously, they would bounce to the bottom of the rotation list. This amendment said they're just going to be bumped down to the next call.
No. They lose their, they lose their spot in line. And they are bumped to the bottom. A non-response, a non-answer, they lose their churn.
Yeah. And then it goes, if there's ten, then they go back to the bottom of the list.
Yeah, they'll get called back.
The revised, should a call replace the wrecker service? Okay, that's the...
If we cancel it, it's canceled.
If we cancel it, they don't lose their place. If for some reason that tow is canceled by us, for whatever reason, that's not their fault, they do not lose their place.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Mr. Mayor, if I may jump in as well. Mr. Airwood, to be honest with you, I'm a proponent of the bid process, but I think some of our local wrecker providers are having as much trouble keeping up with growth as the City of Greer is. And when I say growth, I mean their own businesses' growth. So as we grow and prosper, I think they have an opportunity to grow and prosper as well, which means they will have an opportunity to explain, expand their opportunities. But right now, I think from, from a priority being police department, a priority being the police department's ability to do their job, what we need is breadth in this particular case, and the ability to pull a number of resources from a number of areas, given the challenges that we are seeing. So under the circumstances, even if we add that half-mile or mile radius around the city, what that's doing is deepening our bench so we can ensure that we get these roadways clear. I don't know that if we went to a competitive bid process right now, those providers that are locally, that locally service Greer would have the horsepower at this time to be able to handle our workload. If we went with three, I really think we'd be in a, we'd really be struggling. That's why I think if we max it out at ten, and you're right, we will absolutely have to be addressing this in three to five, seven years. But as we've seen this ordinance, we do think that this balance is struck as best as possible, giving the police department the priority it has in the existence of this ordinance.
I have a few questions.
Go for it.
I don't know. So I'm just looking through the ordinance, and is there any reason why we took the safety components off the trucks and requiring them to have certain level of lights and, you know, requiring them to be able to...
Those were relocated.
Okay.
A lot of the leases in the ordinance were just leases in that section and moved to another section. Part of the amendment is to improve enforcement, is to reorganize this, to implode better. So all the safety requirements for wrecker businesses are still plus.
Well, I've been tracking this for what, a year and a half now? I don't know, it's been a while. But every time we had a few wreckers get up to talk, this time it was only one, it was none of the other ones that had been up before. So I don't know if that's a good thing or a bad thing, but I guess we'll see.
If I can, I've talked to four separate businesses very recently. The most, the amendment that we suggested that created the most conversation was the geographical location. I actually was told that the other ones, the other modifications were satisfactory to those companies, and they didn't have any issues with them.
I find this whole thing a bit of a catch-22, because, you know, I understand without a doubt, or beyond a shadow of a doubt, that we need to make this as easy on our employees and our staff as we possibly can. And while there may be better ways of doing it in the long run, that for what we have in the short run, this is, this is probably as good an alternative as we've got. It, it's interesting to me that, you know, we've only got four, five, maybe six qualified within the city, but another four right there at the fringe of the city. And so if we say, you know, half a mile, you know, why is it not a mile? Why is it half a mile? You know, who's going to track if it's half a mile, or it's six-tenths of a mile, or all those kinds of things. And I think it just, almost to Jay's point, at some point gets so complicated that it begins to burden you all again at some point. The other thing I find a little bit interesting about this, and particularly is in regards to the residency requirement, is that apparently there was some acknowledgement that, of those that already exist in the city, that, you know, that they might even have to acquire a truck to stay in business, because there was quite a bit of laughter out here when you all, when you all brought that up. So obviously, somebody's, you know, somebody's got lots that are located in the city and a telephone number that goes there, but no truck, no vehicle. So, you know, my take on this is, you know, we don't even, as a council, haven't even voted in the past to regulate smoking in the city. We didn't regulate COVID in the city. I just, I find this whole thing about regulating the wreckers to be a little outside of our league in any event. So, you know, whatever you propose is what I'm going to vote for tonight. And if it includes that amendment for half a mile, that's fine with me. I have no experience whatsoever in this regard, and I'm going to leave it at that.
I agree. If anybody knows problems and what we need and has been on it daily, it's these people. I mean, you almost have to totally trust what they tell you is the problem and the solution. And I'm willing to do it.
Other, want to weigh in. This is your time for comment. Questions. I do not know if we have covered the gentleman's, Mr. Baldwin's seven or eight or nine questions there. There was one in regards to registration. Have we discussed that in any regard?
I have. I think I jotted down. I may go out of order. First questions, he asked about what does place of business mean? And that is defined as the actual location from which a wrecker service operates its wrecker and towing equipment, and from which they conduct business with customers. He said something about a building. I suppose if you can accomplish all of the other requirements as far as signage and things like that, and you don't have a building, I suppose that you don't have to have a building. You just have to meet the lot storage safety requirements, the security requirements, the signage requirements. I suppose you do not have to have a physical building unless, unless a business license requires that. I don't know, but you would have to have your business license, your truck registered at that location, signage, appropriate fencing, et cetera. There is no specific requirement for a building. But we did add a very specific definition of place of business in this, or, I mean, so I don't know if that answers that question.
Well, that addresses registration as well then? I mean, it goes back to Mr. Airwood's question to begin with, that I think is...
Yeah, that's exactly right. So Daniel, how about weighing in here, because you've got to have, what is defined in the proposed, or the changes in the ordinance is a place where you conduct your business of operating wrecker service, which office, place to park the truck when it's not being used, and you have to have a storage facility, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So again, Daniel Hughes owns a building, and you decide to get out being an attorney, and you run a wrecker. But you say, well, I can get more business if I start five more businesses.
If I start?
If you start, because you're on a rotation, you're saying, you know what, instead of getting one out of every 10 calls, I could get five out of every 10. Because I can put four more businesses together under a different name, they're not owned by you, they're named, they're owned by a company that you've established. And you're leasing them space in this building for offices. And let's say behind the building, you've got a big area for storage. And I don't think that our ordinance says you have to have a storage facility that's a certain size.
It does.
Okay. I'm asking these folks, okay? So if, even if you've got a big area, and it's defined by size, well, if that size is four times greater than what, or five times greater, then all four of your additional businesses could store vehicles back there. Now, I got what you're saying, that it's, the intent is, so you don't have that problem. But you know how intent is. So, I mean...
Under your hypothetical, if I were to own a big lot, and I opened up a rental business, and I met all the requirements for my business license, and I met the requirement for rotation list, and then you came along and said, hey, Daniel, I want to lease this section of your property, I want to open my own rental business. You've got a separate place of business under a separate name, and you and I, I'm not owning any part of your business, okay? Then that would be allowed, because that's a separate place of business.
I got you.
Not a separate company. But under your hypothetical, if I'm opening up multiple companies at one location, that would not be permitted, under multiple wrecker businesses.
I don't see how that it's excluded.
Well, if you look at the definition of place of business, I think it is.
Two C.
Actual location which a wrecker service operates is a wrecker and towing equipment which they have business to touch. And then it downloads that only one wrecker service can occupy a place of business for the purposes of the wrecker rotation list.
Right. So 200A is your original business. 200B is the other company you set up. You're...
If there's another provision, it would, under common control, was also not allowed, under 2C.
Had to be Daniel's wife.
Did what?
Had to be Daniel's wife that did the second gun.
She's on the...
Okay. And would you not have to even subdivide the big piece of property into separate property?
Addresses.
Yeah. All right. Let's, he asked about assistance when needed. Can we clarify that?
Yes. So I think that the fee schedule is pretty clear. No, you cannot arbitrarily just charge extra. If you need help because you don't have the equipment to handle the call for service that we've called you for, you can ask for help, but you can only charge in accordance with the fee schedule now. The fee schedule does, let me find it, I had it, talk about additional, it allows for additional charges if you have to retrieve, if you have to roll the vehicle over, or retrieve it from a steep, steep slope or embankment, and drag it up, and things like that. Extra cleanup, there is no provision for charging for extra cleanup. You're required to clean up the mess. If you want to call someone for help, you can call someone for help, but you don't get to charge for it. So there, the fee schedule is pretty clear about when you can charge extra. So if you cannot turn that car over by yourself, and you call someone to help you, the fee schedule says you can charge an additional, like, two, I forget what it is, 200 something dollars. And if you want to provide that to the wrecker company you called to help you do it, then that's your choice. But you can't charge outside the fee schedule. And I think that the fee schedule is pretty, pretty fair in that regard.
And we, to address that, I think, I think the fee schedule should be set appropriately to cover any other expenses that may come up, like a credit card expense, for example. If you do, might have, once in a blue moon, you may come up with a tow that you don't make money off of. And I don't like that. No one wants that. But I do think just by bad luck or just strange circumstances, there might be an occasion where you don't necessarily make a profit off of each job. But we do, we do hope that the fee schedule is set up appropriately so that the overwhelming majority of time, you're going to make a profit. That's what we want. But I do think it's, it is an overall investment into being a member of this rotation list, that hopefully at the end of the year, you've netted profit.
The last thing I had done was clarifying the absence ordinance, I mean, piece of the ordinance.
I think I tried to speak a little bit to that earlier about the exception, the acceptable reasons to not respond to that. If you recall, do you have any other further questions from my clarification from earlier?
Chief Hambly's discretion. I think it's rather cumbersome, rather defined, what constitutes every unjustified, unreasonable reason for not responding. And so everyone knows how reasonable Chief Hambly is. You know, you, it's, he's going to, he's going to be lenient in that respect, but you can't not respond for no good reason or an unjustified reason. I think that kind of speaks for itself. I think that's a clear enough definition, a guideline for him to make that decision. And I'll also point out that I did exert in the ordinance, for the benefit of these businesses, an appeal procedure. And if they get suspended or removed, they don't think it's justified, but they have the right to come before you and tell you why. And so that protects their rights to come back on the rotation list if they can show you for good cause why Chief Hambly's decision was not proper.
Okay. Counsel, any other questions of our staff? Counsel, any other questions of our staff or Mr. Hughes?
One thing that comes to mind to me is, I know you said that a lot of them turn it down because maybe it's an older vehicle, maybe it's a moped, motorcycle, whatever, and they don't want to deal with that. Do you get into all that before they turn the call down?
So, I don't know how often that happens in their mind, but we do provide that information. So when dispatch calls, they'll say, "You're up next on list, it's a collision at this intersection, you're getting the moped." "Oh, well, you know, we're not available, we're in Greenville." Maybe they are. Maybe it's the moped, we don't know. "You're getting the 1990 Honda Accord that was just totaled in this collision." Well, insurance calls are good calls, let's do, like, because insurance, a lot of times we'll pay those. So I don't have the ability to read minds, and so there has to be some sort of limit there. And I really feel like there's plenty of leeway for them to pick and choose even though they're not supposed to, or have serious emergencies where they can't respond. And just, I know this is significant changes. They, a lot of our companies are looking to me to hold the other companies, you know, to the fire on the ordinance that we have, and they all have a different perspective, and they all, a lot of them are not in compliance here, but when someone in compliance here, and these folks are, it's just really, really hard, the way that it's written, and requires travel. And there was a time last year, I mean, I was getting calls every day from mostly the wrecker companies about who's in compliance, who's not, who's taking cars here, who's not, who's charging this fee, who's not. And it's just, it's really, really difficult. And I really feel like with this version, it's a lot more simple for us to regulate, because that's what we're required to do.
So did you determine to not tell them what kind of vehicle it is when you dispatched?
No, they have to know what they're picking up. In part, because they have to decide what kind of truck, and in part, if there's multiple cars on a collision, they, you know, recalling multiple records, they have to know which car they're picking up when they get there.
And it allows them to go directly to that vehicle out on the roadway. Sometimes you'll have an accident scene, there's stuff over four lanes wide, and if they know exactly which car to look for, they can just pull right up to it, not have to park somewhere, walk out, and track the officer down, and ask.
And that's not, I don't think that that happens every day, all day, but it happens.
Is it too hard to track who the habitual offender is on mopeds?
Well, no, because, you know, our CAD system records not answers or refusals. I'd have to dig in, and so there's where that would be cumbersome, too. I'd have to dig into each specific call by case number to see what type of car they were given, and did they refuse. I can see that they didn't show up, but I'd have to look in much deeper to figure out the kind of car. And I just, I don't have...
So you can't charge as much for towing a moped as you can a car?
You can. It's just, it's more unlikely that they'll recover that cost. It's more unlikely that that person will come pick up their moped, because it's probably not worth the cost of the tow and the storage at that point. Sometimes they do, but...
So, you know, that question about finding out, researching all these things, it's time consuming by itself, and I can say Lieutenant Blackwell, as well as all of our staff, our management staff as well, she has responsibility of oversight over our detention center, our telecommunications center, and animal control, regulatory services, judicial services, property evidence. She has 24-hour operations that, you know, she's answering phone calls throughout the night, weekends. She really doesn't need to be chasing down tow violations. So that really, I hate to say it, it's important, it is important. But it's not as important as the safety and security and management of our detention center, making sure we're handling calls appropriately, and our telecommunications center. I mean, we have things that are literally kind of like life-saving or life, the difference of life or death in some occasions, that she's overseeing the personnel who carry out dysfunctions. So it's literally a competing priority for her. I'm sure she would like to do a lot more of management on the toes. We need to put this thing on autopilot as good as possible.
Counsel, let's seek to do that if we can. I know that, given the fact that apparently it would be straining on us to limit only using those services inside the city, I'm going to ask that whoever made the motion and then the second, to seek to amend that motion so that we can extend an offer to companies within a half mile of the city limits doing so. I believe we are going to have to strike amendment, or strike 94-152, which is the piece regarding the storage lots, is that correct?
It would also be amended. So if you're within the city limits of Greer with your primary business location, it's still appropriate to have your lot location within one mile of that business, in my opinion, because it's still within the city limits. If your business is not within the city limits, but it is within that amended .5 miles, then my argument would be, your lot also needs to be at that location, because if we allow for that mile driving, now we're a mile and a half outside the city any given direction.
Mr. Mayor, I think we understand counsel's intent, and we will draft an amendment for you for consideration in second reading. So if you make a motion that we allow for this, we will put the words to it and bring it to you for your consideration in second reading.
Because at the end, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion, questions?
One other question that I didn't, I don't know if it was answered or not, the credit card fee, did we address that? Not charging it?
So I will say, again, we're trying to make, trying to make the fees as flat, as consistent, and similar as possible. So if we need room for credit card fees, which of course may vary between who the vendors are, I would suggest that we just make sure that our fee schedule is appropriate enough to handle something like a credit card fee. So if we needed to up that $5, I'm just throwing a number out there, for example, then let's do that. I would just recommend that we not allow credit card fee to be just added on, because that credit card fee could be $3.95, or it could be $39.10, I don't know. Just depends.
What's the thing now?
There isn't one, so this is new. Currently, there is nothing requiring a company to accept credit cards, and I think that times have changed, and I looked at a lot of wrecker ordinances and that sort of common practice, that they're required to accept them, so...
There's a lot of credit card companies that want to, if you look at your agreement, although it's common practice.
I think Chief Hambly said you're just adding an additional $3, $5, you know, it would probably be easier if that was what was required, you know?
For first reading on the recommendation of staff, I'll entertain a, we've already got a motion and a second on the floor. Any additional comments in regards to ordinance 30-2022 at this point in time? We'll seek an amendment for second reading.
One last comment, can we consider holding this till we get everything buttoned up? Because I don't feel comfortable enough to vote with a little ambiguity in there.
If you want to make a motion to hold over, we will consider it.
I'd like to make a motion to hold this over till next meeting.
We have a motion to amend and hold over, is there a second in that regard? We have a motion and a second then to hold it over.
So instead of taking first reading and buttoning all that up in between that and second reading, you want to just hold all of it?
Yeah, hold it and then button it up.
That's the motion.
And then vote.
So you're not comfortable with just it being buttoned up in time to review for second?
Yeah, I feel like I need to deep dive a little further.
So we have a motion and a second then to hold it over. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
No.
Mr. Bettis?
No.
Ms. Albert?
No.
Mayor Danner?
No.
Counsel, we'll go back to the motion and a second in regards to ordinance 30-2022. Motion and a second on the floor. Any additional comments or questions in that regard? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
For this first reading, no.
Mr. Booker?
No.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Counsel, we resume with item two, which is the first reading of ordinance number Mr. Matt Mahan, we're going to hold on while the room clears.
Amy, who does the processing of credit cards?
This is, we're talking about, it's them. The ones that they challenge, we don't process, they do.
Yeah. It's where it can be a nightmare, everyone's different.
So they want to put a fee on, cover it there, we're saying, you're not, most credit card companies don't allow you to do it. But as I say, it's done a lot.
All right, Counsel, we got the first reading of ordinance number 31-2022. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Kimberly Whitlock located at 305 Pine Street from R12 to DRD. Mr. Matt Mahan?
Thank you, Mayor and Counsel. So as you stated, this is for a rezoning at 305 Pine Street. The applicant is requesting to rezone to DRD to allow the existing garage to be converted to an accessory dwelling unit that will also have storage and an office. Here's an aerial view of the property. Here is the current zoning map, all of the property in the area is on R12. Here's the future land use map, the property is on, or is traditional neighborhood. Here's kind of an older version of a street view. And kind of here, this is what the applicant has already started, she has already started converting some of the garage with some French doors, putting some windows in. Here is the proposed site plan, so it's the existing garage, the footprint of the garage, the expansion will not change, it is what it is at this point. And here is kind of the layout. So as you see, kind of down here on this bottom section, the applicant is going to turn this into an office for her to use, and this will be her personal storage. She is planning on renting out the first, remainder of the first floor, and the bedroom will be on the second floor. Within the statement of intent, what we required was that the owner of the property either lived in the primary residence or in the accessory dwelling, and that all utilities be tied into the main house. That's just kind of prevent that something can be sold and not have utilities disconnected. Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on June 20th, they did make a recommendation of approval, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property a representative of the owner of the property with us?
Yes.
You available for questions?
Sure.
I got one, did you understand anything about that wrecker ordinance?
I just understood what you said.
I wanted to make sure, we forced you to sit here through the whole thing. I just wanted to make sure that you understood what we were doing.
I have a question. This is like the second one in that neighborhood to do this sort of thing. Do we need to have some type of control over this so that it's addressed from now on? Apparently, we don't have anything that really addresses it.
So what we were hoping with the UDO is to have this in there, if that's something Counsel would like us to go ahead and bring forward, we can work with our consultant to have that brought to you and adopted to allow for accessory dwelling units in certain locations.
Because this almost puts it into a, you know, a multifamily little unit right there on that one piece of property. And it's really not intended for that.
Yeah, if you would like, we can get with the consultant and bring the whole accessory dwelling unit section from the UDO forward, and we can, I think we reviewed it maybe about six months ago to kind of go over the requirements of that, so we can have them set that up and bring it to you for potential adoption.
Ms. Whitlock, would you like to address Counsel in regards to what might possibly take place there in regards to...
I have one quick question based off of that, what you just asked. If everything's coming to the main house, I mean, two separate would be, you'd have your own sewer, your own water, you'd pay your own bills, right? That's connected to the house. So I don't, how many people have separate that they pay, you know, one? I'm just asking now, because...
Well, this is a kind of a unique situation in a residential neighborhood, period.
Yeah, I'd like it as a guest house, and if I wanted to rent it, rent it, but I have a two-bedroom house, I want to have another bedroom for my guests.
Well, it probably presents an interesting possibility for the next owner.
Okay.
You know, I'm always kind of looking down the road, what happens when this changes If it's all in the same sewer tap, water tap, period, I think it's got to be a package deal. I don't know, to me, it's a little bit confusing for a residential area. I'm not opposed to having it.
Yeah, no, I was just wondering, because if I was buying a place or making it separate, I would not want my utilities within another house that's right beside it, is my point, but that's just me.
You could make the point, if you attach this to the main house with a breezeway, it's one structure. We're not even having this conversation, but with it being tied in with utilities, it makes sense to me.
I think Brandon's point, thank you. I think Brandon's point is well taken about, you know, the UDO and addressing that, because quite honestly, we've got folks like Ms. Whitlock who make the time and the effort and the expense to let us know what they're doing. And we've got a host of others that have done a very similar type of thing, that never come before this council.
Yeah, that's a good point.
That's kind of the basis for my inquiry, is we need something that addresses this in every instance.
The conversation as well goes beyond that, because I think ultimately what was going to happen in particular in this area, because, you know, I can put you in the golf cart and show you 10 of these right now, you know, within 200 or 300 yards of this, is we're going to have to look at some point in time about how we handle short-term rentals. And that's going to be another piece of this. And so, you know, I think it's appropriate to address in the UDO for those folks, like the gentleman on the corner above her who has done the same thing, and...
As long as it doesn't require on-street parking, I'm not opposed to it.
Yeah, I think the way that it's being handled now with DRD, and because if you, if we take a really hard-line stance on it, then it's going to drive people further away from coming to us, and they'll just do it. And at that point, right now, I don't know if there's a lot that we can do.
Ms. Duncan, we got a motion and a second on this? For the purposes of discussion, ordinance number 31-2022, I'll entertain a motion received. Second. And second. We can continue discussion at this point. Comments? Any additional discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Arrowood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Thank you.
Next item before us this evening is the reading of ordinance number 32-22. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Upstate House Projects LLC located on Highland Avenue from R1... from R one multifamily to R five Garden Court. Mr. McManahan.
Yes, sir. This property is located at the corner of Highland and Wilson Street. The request is to rezone the property from RM one to R five. The applicant is wanting to subdivide the property basically for the property line down the middle here, here to create two lots for a single-family development. Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on June twentieth. They did make a recommendation of approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive. Second. And a second. Floor's open for discussion. By show of hand, is the owner of the property a representative of the owner of the property here? Thank you, sir. So noted. Questions? Comments? Discussion?
So on this site, to say again about the being subdivided?
I believe that the site plan that I've seen, he hasn't had it recorded because the property hadn't been rezoned.
Right.
The desire is to put a lot line basically right in the middle.
Okay.
Of the two lot, of the lot to create two.
Is that a vacant lot now?
Yes, sir, it is currently vacant. They're building a house on the lot to the left of it.
Gotcha. Any additional information you'd like to add to this discussion at this point?
Well, I'm just saying that the residential, the, the residential house though, that was just right on the corner, there's solar, there's water on the street, so it's just, uh, running to the top of something down there.
Thank you. That's called infill. Others? Hearing done, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
First reading of ordinance thirty-eight dash twenty-two. This is an ordinance to remove the City of Greer Gateway International Business Center overlay district established by Article five, Section five fifteen of the City of Greer zoning ordinances from the City of Greer, excuse me, zoning map. Mr. McManahan.
Yes, sir. As we kind of discussed in one of the workshops with overlay, staff was going to bring this to you as a recommendation to remove the GIBC Gateway International Business Center overlay from the zoning map. Kind of concern we have had is some of the uses are very limited. The majority of the property in this location is on I one, but the uses that are allowed within the district are just these, office with accessory retail, office warehouse, office warehouse, distribution and manufacturing. So the full list of I one uses that these properties are on are not allowed to be used based on the overlay district. There are some requirements for building materials. It's typically what you would think of industrial parks, precast, cement, split block, brick, stone, stucco, those types of materials. There is a little bit of enhanced signage requirements. But other than that, that's really the only requirements within GIBC. We do have one property in the city that is zoned GIBC, so that is why we're not requesting to remove the text from it, just the overlay.
By show of hand, is the owner of the property, representative of the owner of the property with us this evening? Thank you. Entertain a motion to receive for the purpose of discussion. Second. Floor's open for discussion. Questions? Comments? Hearing done, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
First reading of the ordinance number thirty-nine dash twenty-two. This is an ordinance to change the zoning classification of property owned by Cullum GSP oh eight one LP located at Brookshire Road and Highway one oh one south from I one to S one. Mr. McManahan?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This request is to rezone the parcel right here at the intersection of Brookshire and Highway one oh one. Here's an aerial view of that property. It is to rezone it to S one from I one. Here is the current zoning map. This is kind of the Highway one oh one transitional, so the property will, all properties that front Highway one oh one are in a separate overlay, so this property will remain in that overlay, but it does not have use restrictions. It's more aesthetic-type restrictions. Here is the future land use map. This property is within next employment. And to kind of give you an aerial view of kind of how it looks within the Brookshire or off Brookshire Road, this is that picture. And here is the current kind of site area. The applicant is requesting to rezone to S one for potential future development. One of the uses that he is looking at trying to market is not allowed in I one, which would be a gas station, which kind of surprised us a little bit that gas station was not allowed in I one. So that is his reasoning for the request of move to S one. Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on June twentieth, and they did make a recommendation of approval for the S one zone.
Entertain a motion to receive for the purpose of discussion. And a second. Second. Floor's open for discussion. By show of hand, is the owner of the property a representative of the owner of the property with us? Thank you, sir. So noted. Floor's open for discussion. Comments? Questions? Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
First reading of the ordinance number forty dash twenty-two, an ordinance to amend the City of Greer downtown overlay district zoning map established by Article five, Section five eighteen of the City of Greer zoning ordinances by removing certain properties identified herein from the City of Greer downtown overlay district. Mr. McManahan.
Yes, sir. This request is to amend the zoning map for the downtown overlay district to remove these two parcels here between Moore Street and Randall Street. Within the overlay district, this is one of our most strict districts right here. There is no ability for alternative compliance. The materials that are required are absolute. There is no way to deviate from these within this district. We did have a plan come for us for one of the properties that is wanting to add an additional building. The building type they were wanting to put was not allowed by code. In discussing that with the applicant, we kind of went through the process of taking it to BZA for an appeal of staff's decision to make sure we're interpreting the ordinance correctly. In talking with that applicant, we felt that if that was the option, BZA would more than likely side with staff because the way ordinance is written, they have to follow what is complied. So this is kind of the site plan that they are proposing for the one parcel. The parcel above it is just a vacant parcel that is currently being used for parking. So the building would be kind of to the rear, kind of eastern part of the property. And here is an aerial view. Planning Commission kind of debated this for a good bit, but there was a lot of.
Is it aerial view?
Oh, sorry. Do you want the aerial view back up, sir?
Oh, you're talking, okay. So it's not an aerial, it's just.
It's just a site plan, I'm sorry. That, that, that's my bad on that one. Planning Commission, they did debate this for a good bit. They did make a recommendation of denial to remove these two properties from the overlay district. The next ordinance is ordinance forty-one. We kind of took that to them as well. That is to add the properties to the highway transitional district, but that is less requirements. But before you, for forty is to remove these two parcels, which is the Messer property, and I believe this one is owned by A-Hop LLC. It's currently just used for parking, I believe, for the doctor's office across the street. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, but Planning Commission did make a recommendation for denial.
For the purpose of discussion, I'll entertain a motion to receive. So moved. And a second. Is the owner of the property or representative of the owner of the property with us this evening?
Yes.
Thank you.
One of the Messers.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Messer. Well, we may have questions for you, so thank you. Floor's open for discussion.
Can you go back to that street shot, street view?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So help me out here. The new building that spurred all of this would be located where?
Kind of where this truck is right here on the picture, it will kind of go in this area.
In the back?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so as far as road frontage, you've got the existing, their existing building. And then in back of the building would be a new building?
Yes, sir, I can go to the site plan.
So the existing building is made of what?
It's mainly a metal building. They do have some brick on the front facade. The building was completed and built before the overlay district.
It's not conforming now, right?
Yes, sir, it's not.
Any building, they want to build a similar design?
Yes, sir, it'd be a similar building. This is basically the rendering of it.
So go back again to the two parcels. So if both of those come out, is there, would there be, even if, even if we did forty-one, would there be a possibility that that building could be moved to that other parcel?
They don't own that parcel, but if someone wanted to build a similar type building and ordinance forty-one was passed, what would be a part of ordinance forty-one is the front facade facing right-of-way. Visible from right-of-way has to comply with a certain material requirement. But I can get into more detail on that on forty-one.
Okay, okay, all right. That makes sense then. Okay. Other questions? Yeah, I just wanted to see if we, I wanted to be able to address all the questions, or address our questions if we had more of them. All right. Ms. Messer, if you want to address the council, that'd be fine.
Just questioning why this other parcel was brought into consideration. Because that's a main, the main road. We didn't ask for that. All I asked for was the term of end for our property. Why did that other piece of property?
Yes, so this, yes, ma'am, yeah. This is a staff-initiated request to remove the parcel. Staff felt it was best that if we were just going to remove one, it might be best to remove the two in between the tracks to have it, just so it's consistent. Otherwise, you would just have one out, one in from a consistency standpoint. And transition into downtown, we felt these two parcels coming out of the downtown overlay and going into potentially the highway transitional made more sense than just removing one.
So there's not, there's not a request from the applicant or the owner of the rectangular piece of property?
From this piece, no, sir.
The, the way I understood this is the owner had no standing to make this request. Is that, am I correct about that?
It, it's kind of weird with overlays because it's not like you're requesting new zoning. It's, staff, when discussing it, felt that it should come from staff to request the removal of the overlay because it's not a request to change the zoning of the property, it's just to remove the overlay of the property.
I think staff's trying to help. Messers, I've, I've been involved with this from the, from the beginning. Ms. Messer, she got in touch with me and, and full disclosure, my business does business with, with Messer Mirror. But they, they want to put a building at the, in the back, which is, I don't know if it's going to be hidden or, but go to that street view again.
Yes, sir.
This is the, the view you have now when you're coming down Main. And then immediately you go up on the overpass. And as you see back here, this big warehouse building, that's non-conforming, correct, right now?
Yes, sir.
Their building, the, the building they want to build will be behind, so it's really not going to change the look. History behind it is, or behind this whole section is that from Main on both sides, well, on, on the upper side, CSX, lower side, Norfolk Southern, all the way out to Main, maybe even a little further in Green Mill, was zoned I one at one point. And best I can figure is that in ninety-five, council made the request to change the zoning, and a lot of it was changed from I one, and then the, the downtown overlay district was added. You know, we added that later on. But I think this is one of the unintended consequences that, with all of that. I mean, you got, well, when that site was built, there was not even any overhead, overpass. So I, I think the, the thing that, that we could do that would help the Messers in their quest to put this building up is to take that property, their property, out of that overlay district, place it back into the highway transitional, which then gives them more flexibility to, to, you know, to come back in with a plan and show, well, okay, when we built this other building, we did a lot of stuff to the face of it, going to improve the looks. The only thing that would make it, that is non-conforming in the highway overlay district is the pitch of the roof. But they still would have the opportunity to go to BZA, correct, and ask for relief on that. The way it is now, they have no, they have no, they have no course of action.
I've, I've got no problem with what Ms. Messer's trying to do. I, I, I understand that. I guess my heartburn comes from this other piece that they don't even own. And the eventual use of, of that, what, and, and I know that if we, if we proceed on overturning the commission with ordinance forty, what assurances have we got under highway transitional that if we pull this overlay off, that somebody doesn't come in here and puts a building on that other parcel that is inappropriate for the primary entrance to the city right there? What, what, what regulations does highway transitional offer us to keep somebody from sticking Jack's fireworks stands out there or something?
So within the highway transitional, it has eighty percent of the facade visible from the roadway. So as you're coming down Main towards Pressey Creek, you would have, let me actually go to the parcel so it's a little easier. Street view might be better. So as you're coming down, you would be able to see roughly this side of the building, you would be able to see the front of the building, and you'd be able to see this side. So eighty percent of those three sides visible from the right-of-way would be required to have brick, stone, wood siding. It's, it's got a list of materials that they have to meet. So that would have, those three sides would have to comply with that. Basically, the back of the building could be at all metal, but the sides visible would have to comply with that eighty percent of the front, of the facade visible.
So go back one second because this is actually the, the entrance and exit to the property behind it, is it not as well?
No, I believe there's an entrance just across the road.
I thought there was, I think there's a curb cut right here, but I could be wrong. I don't have the street view that shows that.
There's an easement, we have an easement. I think that's Broadway, I think that's what you call the right-of-way.
Okay. So you have an easement to your property.
Yes.
The owners of the factory, is, they have, they own all the way to the road then? Except for that parcel or that parcel that we're talking about is in, what ownership is that in? They own that? Did we approach the adjacent owner about taking it out? Because this warehouse and that piece are owned by the same folks.
It's just, it's, it's owned by the same folks. We did not approach them because this was staff-initiated. We, we've done this a few times. Like with GIBC, we didn't approach all of the individual property owners in there since it's staff-initiated. The council has that authority to make those amendments as, as needed.
I was just thinking in the future, if they had plans for that property, consistency-wise, it could, I don't know. I agree with Mayor, that's the only heartache I got is that piece being taken out too. What if we just call it?
I understand staff's reasoning there because if you're going to do one of those pieces, it almost makes sense to do, to do.
it almost makes sense to do, to do both of them as an approach right there. I, I, I just got a feeling that whoever eventually develops that, that old facility back there at the back, I don't know that they're all even going to be able to do that in the historic in the downtown district of overlay.
They, they would be able to maintain the current building. They wouldn't be able to do, do a whole lot more because it's already non-conforming.
Yeah.
So can we, can we take off that one parcel? Because that's what seems to be the issue at this point. And I, and I understand what you're saying because the Messers, their building is somewhat hidden, but, but the one that you're, we got questioned about is, it's just out there. I'm, I'm going to have to look to staff on this one because it's come to us as one, it's come to us as one ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, I don't think in this particular case, if, if council's intention is to remove the smaller lot that is a parking lot, I think that can easily, we can easily amend that and bring it to you as an amendment for second reading. So I, I don't know that functionally that, that it makes that big of a difference. It's just the way the map's going to look. It's going to have a carve-out.
Well, we've got a non-conforming building down in either way.
That's right. And, and you really have a non-conforming building in the, in the larger parcel adjacent to it that's not being considered that, you know, you could argue that that may as well be taken out of the overlay as well.
I would agree.
That's so, I mean, so to that point, are, are you asking us to remove that one or go ahead and remove the larger building out of the overlay at second reading?
So Ms. Messer, to your, to your knowledge, that smaller rectangular piece is owned by the people that own the rest of the property behind it there? The fact, the old factory, the old plant? Okay. Counsel, given, given we've got a non-conforming building anyway, and we've got a request from the owner to address this situation, and while I respect the, the thought process behind extending this along that frontage on staff's behalf, I would only be comfortable at this point in time addressing this Messer's property. If that takes doing first reading to get the ball going, then I'm, I'm willing to do that and take the other piece out for second reading. The thing that we've got to consider is this, we're going to have to overturn the planning commission, so it takes a super majority of those present, so it'll be four votes.
Well, if you leave the square in the overlay, if it's developed and they do it by the overlay standards, it's going to be a decent looking place.
It'll absolutely be a decent looking place. I mean, they'll have to to meet those standards.
Well, to give you some, just across the street, the, the dentist office across the street is in the Highway Overlay. So just from an aesthetic standpoint, you could probably expect something that mirrors that on that piece, given the design standards in the Transitional Highway Corridor.
Okay. That's, so that, how far does the Highway Overlay, does it go down any further on Pennsylvania?
I may, Brandon, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's just that front row of parcels right there on the west side of the road that are in the Transitional Highway. It doesn't go any farther down Pennsylvania, down towards...
Okay.
I, I'm, I'm asking.
So all, all of the blue is all downtown overlay. Highway Transitional is basically starts at Memorial Drive, comes into Main Street, and then extends from just below Main and Arlington and heads up till you get to basically bond. So that's the overlay. So what we were wanting to do is to put that overlay in forty-one on these properties. So you would create that transition. That's one of the things that we've come to show you all in the UDO was those Transitional corridors, we called them interway corridors, is creating those. We figured we could go ahead and add that on to these two.
I don't question your reasoning at all. I mean, I think it's appropriate. I, I just don't know without an application from the applicant and the future potential use of the rest of that property that it's not more appropriate at this point in time just to deal with Ms. Messer's piece of property and then address that other larger piece in, in a more global kind of issue.
And we can, we can definitely adjust them in, or the ordinance and adjust the map and have that for you at second reading.
Okay. We clear council on, on what we've, we've got a motion and a second on the floor. I think our intent is that we address Ms., the Messer property and the other property together tonight in first reading with an expectation that on second reading, we would come back for the Messer property only in regards to removing it from the overlay. In this case, a, we have a, Planning Commission has suggested denial, so a vote by council of no means we approve of moving forward on Ms., on the Messer property. Correct?
Two things. One, we're going to need a motion.
I'm about to bust.
We're going to need, we're going to need a motion to amend the existing ordinance in front of you to remove the smaller piece, so whatever that tax map number is. So that'll, that, that'll have to be done as part of this. So I think in this case, if there's a motion and a second to remove that parcel, then we're going to consider the...
Would it be, would it be cleaner to table or hold this over and come back with a clean motion for the Messer property?
You're still going to have to deal with, with the denial from Planning Commission.
Okay.
Okay? And I think that's, that's, that's got to be addressed. Mike, do you have a comment on this?
Ms. Duncan, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe that if you make a motion to approve and you pass it by a super majority, it will override the planning commission.
Yes.
With a possible vote.
Yes.
So if the motion is to approve, it just requires a super majority in order for you to override the recommendation.
That's right.
By the planning commission. With a vote of yes.
With the ordinance.
Am I amending it for second reading?
Well, that's entirely up to council. If you want to await the duty of amending the next reading you can, or you can do that in...
That's right.
I think it would be most appropriate then to amend tonight to address ordinance forty twenty twenty-two to exclude, who doesn't identify it by an ordinance, by, two tax numbers listed, I don't know which one goes.
Switch back to your survey one, you can probably see it that way. Can we zoom in?
Okay.
Counsel can make a motion to approve with the removal of that parcel.
How do we identify, how do we identify that parcel?
That parcel ends in six hundred.
Yeah. And just reference that it ends in six hundred and then we can, we'll clean it up.
One, one can get rid of it ends in six hundred?
Yes. We can clean that part up. We know council's intent.
Okay. Who made the motion this time?
Mr. Airwood.
Okay. Mr. Airwood, will you make a, will you amend your motion to exclude?
You've got a motion to approve with the exclusion of the parcel that, with tax map motion ending in six hundred.
Ending in six hundred.
Yes.
That's my amendment. Thank you all. Okay. And the second was?
Mr. Bettis.
Mr. Bettis.
I amend my second. So...
Okay. The motion has been amended by motion and second, so this vote is to amend, and then we will vote on what we have amended. Wait a minute.
Yes.
Say again. It's going to take two votes because you're amending, you're going to, you're amending the ordinance, so you're going to vote on the amendment, and then you're going to vote on the... And then the question. And then we are going to vote...
Yep.
Right now, we're going to vote on the amended.
Yes, sir.
This is to amend the ordinance.
Yep.
Okay? So we've got the motion and the second. Staff is clear. Ms. Messer, are you following us here on this, what we're trying to do to help you out? And, and council is clear, correct? Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Now we are considering the ordinance, which has been amended, to eliminate the smaller piece to the top and proceed with the Messer property. We have that amended motion and an amended second on the floor. Any discussion in that regard? Hearing then, Ms. Duncan.
You've made a new motion. We need...
New motion to approve this amendment.
Right. So we need a new first...
We need the new motion to amend. I'll entertain a new motion to amend. Okay. To approve, right?
To approve as amended.
To approve as amended.
Correct.
Okay, I'm, I'm making that. Okay. Jay makes that. Do I? And now there's a second. So basically, we're voting to approve it, what we just amended.
Yep.
What we just amended.
That's right.
Yes, and, and an affirmative vote will override the denial by... A super majority, yes.
Super majority, yes, sir.
Yes. Clear. Crystal. Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. We got that? All right. Got it. Um, council back there is giving us clapping.
We didn't even have to, we didn't even excuse him. I mean, you know, he's saying all this now, thinking we were...
He's still on the clock.
Yeah.
I knew you'd diss the nation.
All right. Just for clarity then, first reading of forty-one twenty twenty-two, we need to do to apply to that piece, the Messer piece, correct?
Yes, sir. You could actually apply to both piece if you want. I mean, if you wanted to, you could. The downtown overlay supersedes any overlay, so if there's two properties overlaid and downtown's over it, downtown supersedes Highway Transitional.
Yeah, this one is significantly easier.
So you could not have to do amendments to anything if you prefer not to.
So if we just go ahead and pass forty-one, the overlay's going to, it will apply only to that smaller piece and not...
Yeah, because you just removed the Messer piece, so it's, it's on no management. Yes, sir.
All right. So last item before us this evening is the first reading of Board is number forty-one dash twenty twenty-two. This is an ordinance to amend the City of Greer Highway Transitional Overlay District zoning map established on Article Five, Section five sixteen of the City of Greer zoning ordinances to add the properties identified herein to the Highway Transitional Overlay District. All right. With that, I'll entertain a motion to receive.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
All right. Any questions or discussion in regards to the overlay district, I mean, to the, to the amending of this to the Highway Transitional Overlay? Changing it to that. Questions or comments? Hearing then, Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Council, in executive session, we have two matters before us this evening, the first of which is a contractual matter, the second of which is a contractual matter as well. Two contractual matters to be taken up in executive session. These are both contractual matters, one pertaining to the Taylor's Fire Department as allowed by State Statute Section thirty dash four dash seventy A two, the other in regards to Fifty-two Hundred Wade Hampton LLC as allowed, as allowed by State Statute thirty dash four dash seventy A two. I'll entertain a motion that we go into executive session. I'll make that motion based on what you just said. And a second?
Second.
And a second. Ms. Duncan.
Mr. Airwood?
Yes.
Mr. Booker?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Council, we will stand in executive session. For those of you that remain, we will use these chambers for executive session. We offer you a good evening.